I will now call to order the January 6, 2022, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Administrator Gary Schmidt, would you please call the roll?
Thank you, Chair Smith. First, our staff support today: County Council, Stephen Madcor, Clerk to the Board, Shannon Bays. Commissioner Schull is absent today. Roll call: Commissioner Fisher. Commissioner Savis.
Here.
Commissioner Schrader.
Here.
Chair Smith.
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone, and Happy New Year to 2022. I look forward to it. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. As always, the public is welcome to sign up to testify. Registration for public comment via Zoom is available online. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Order will be enforced in this meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, can you introduce the first item?
Yes, Chair Smith. First is COVID-19 update. Philip Mason-Joyner, Public Health Director, will present. He is on Zoom. Philip, go ahead.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. Thank you, Shannon, for getting up the slideshow. There is a lot of updates to share and information around COVID-19. I really want to encourage folks to read our weekly COVID-19 report that's posted on the county website. And also, on Tuesday, we had a nice work session in the Board convened as the Board of Health on COVID-19. If you want to dive in more deeply and learn more, I'm going to really touch on the highlights for respect for the time here. Next slide, please, Shannon. Here are the case counts in Clackamas County, but also our neighboring counties since the past weekly report and briefing a few weeks ago. So in Clackamas County, we've had 3,500 cases and 29 deaths. In Multnomah County, they've had over 7,000 cases and 35 deaths. And in Washington County, over 5,000 cases and 32 deaths. We are seeing a significant increase in our cases. If you go to next slide, you can see our weekly trend. We have hit the highest case count since the beginning of the pandemic, over 1,400 cases in the past seven days. So we're at the two weeks into this surge, and it's very clear that Omicron is here spreading in our community. With cases this high, public health are very focused on trying to reach the highest-risk people, risk from severe illness and death, doing what we can to support schools, other high-risk settings, and employers so that they have the technical assistance and they have the support that they need to address outbreaks and to be able to continue operating. With high case counts, when cases tend to be high, it then leads to the potential for an increase in hospitalization and deaths later. So we are monitoring that very closely. The next slide shows current hospitalizations related to COVID-19 in the state. The blue line here is in Region 1, which is our region here in the metro area. Currently, 239 patients hospitalized with COVID-19 as of yesterday. So you can see it has, in the past few days, had a slight uptick. We will continue to monitor this really, really closely. As we talked about on Tuesdays, our healthcare system is strained, busy. They're struggling with the same staffing issues that a lot of us are facing. A lot of staff out sick, a lot of folks needing care. So certainly, certainly doing what we can to support our hospital partners as we get through this together. Next slide, OHSU does do a forecast of COVID-19 cases, and it was last updated last week. Here it is. I should clarify, I'm sorry, this is hospitalizations, what they're projecting, where they're seeing an increase in hospitalizations the month of January and then a steep decline just as fast as it has gone up towards the end of January, early February. So that is what the forecast currently shows. And, you know, we expect that OHSU will update this as they get more data and we see how the situation is unfolding. Next slide. The CDC has released shortened quarantine and isolation options for the general public. Doing my best to simplify this for the public as much as possible. You know, I think ultimately, public health officials are trying to balance the risks from COVID-19 while also the need to continue to have society running. So the current guidelines, if you test positive for COVID-19s or you have symptoms, regardless of if you're vaccinated or not, if you've had your booster or not, if you test positive or you have symptoms, you need to stay home and wait from others for a minimum of five days. And if you continue to have no symptoms or you have mild symptoms after five days, then carry out daily activities, wear your mask, and do what you can to protect yourself and others from spreading COVID-19. And then if you were exposed to someone, so you've not tested positive, but you've been exposed, if you're unvaccinated or if you've not yet received your booster, the recommendation and the guidance is the same, the same, the five days staying home and the consistent mask wearing. If you have received your booster shot, you have more protection. So you do not need to wear quarantine, you do not need to quarantine if you're not experiencing symptoms. If you are experiencing symptoms, then you go back to the blue box there where you need to isolate and wearing your mask for the 10 days. I know folks want to also access testing. Testing, there's huge demand. Testing sites across the community are pretty full. Folks are going to urgent care. I really want folks to do their best to seek out community resources and not go to the emergency departments, the local emergency departments, to seek out COVID-19 tested so that those services are provided for critically ill people or folks who need really, really critical emergency care in our community. Next slide. We do have our new testing site that is open. It's in partnership with Clackamas Community College at their Harmony Campus in Milwaukee. So many thanks to our partners for standing up this clinic. It is very busy. Appointments are highly recommended, and the testing site is full. There's appointments early next week. It's the first that are available. Also want to encourage folks to go onto our websites for to access the testing finder so they can find where there might be testing available. And, you know, there's also at-home tests that you can buy at pharmacies, but currently a lot are not available on the shelves. The federal government is sending more tests. And the state of Oregon has made a very large purchase of additional at-home tests. The first shipment was yesterday, is my understanding. And we are waiting for the information. On windows will be provided to us locally so that we can distribute it to community. We'll have a system and our process ready to go once we have them in hand and work with our public and government affairs information to share that out to partners and to the public. Again, if you don't feel well and you can't get a test, our recommendation is to follow those isolation and quarantine guidelines that I provided earlier. This is really about personal responsibility to stay home if you're not feeling well. Really important that we do that in order not to put high-risk folks at risk. Next slide, please, Shannon. Therapeutics, I do want to provide an update with this. They are scarce. If you're feeling sick, not feeling well, you know, things like hydration, cold and flu medicine are helpful. Really want to encourage folks to consult with your healthcare provider if you're getting much worse and not feeling better during your isolation period. If you don't have a healthcare provider, please contact our Clackamas County Health Centers and establish cares with us here at the county. We're here to help. We have locations across the community to serve you. Monoclonal antibody therapy listed here. One of those three currently available therapies works against Omicron, and those supplies are at the hospital for hospitalized patients. The other two do not appear to be working against Omicron. And the shift that's happening nationally is to the pills. Folks may have seen this week that the federal government made an additional, really large order of over 20 million of these antiviral pills. And folks have called us with questions about when they can get the pills, when will they arrive? We do not have that information. We are relying on our state and federal partners for when those will move from production to us locally so they can be provided. And we do anticipate that supplies will be limited at the beginning once these arrives. Next slide, please. Prevention from severe illness and death is most important, and the best tool we have available continues to be vaccination. Clackamas County Public Health, we're expanding the amount of appointments we have and options for folks to access the vaccine and get their booster so they don't have to wait. You know, we have a lot of folks who have waited a long time, who are waiting on our mobile team. We are working really hard to expand capacity to provide service. Right now, 26.4% of Clackamas County community members have received their booster. We're working to increase that percentage, and it's an important action that you can take. So next slide, please. In order to access a vaccine, you can visit our website at clackamas.us/冠状病毒/vaccine for all the information on where our clinics are located and how to get one. You can call our call center at 503-655-8224. I really want to encourage folks to enroll and get vaccinatedorgan.gov. If you register, you'll be alerted when a vaccine is available. And we also have a lot of information on testing, including a testing location finder to help you find access to testing more easily as it becomes available. That's my report for this week. Happy to answer any questions from the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Philip. I think your report reflects the discussion that we had Tuesday of this week, and I appreciate that. I also find fascinating the graph that went, you know, the bell curve, it was a steep bell curve, on the amount of projected hospitalizations. I assume that is in correlation with projected number of cases. It goes up steeply and it will decline steeply. Am I wrong in thinking that?
Yes, that is correct. Each, I suppose each serves we have since the start of the pandemic. It has shown that to be pretty predictable, and we can anticipate that to continue. I know folks are anxious to have OHSU provide an update to their forecast. So we'll see when that comes out. Hopefully, there'll be a new one soon.
Thank you. Of the 1,419 cases of COVID that you cite, do we know if those are all Omicron?
We do not. We know that there's Delta, that the Delta variant is still in the community. But we have a lot of confidence just based on our understanding and seeing that Omicron, a lot of the cases are not causing severe illness requiring hospitalization at this time. So, and there's, you know, a portion of all tests are sequenced at the lab to identify the variants, but not all of them.
Thank you for that. And as you put, there's preventative measures to take. There are also homeopathic remedies to take if you think you're coming down with this. I think they work as well. I asked a question Tuesday, and you may not have had time to prepare the data for. On the hospitalization rates, I asked, those hospitalization rates, has the OHA determined if those people who went to the hospital is because they have hospitalized with COVID, meaning they have another underlying condition that has made their immunity systems weak? There's a difference between being hospitalized with COVID or from COVID, and you may not have that data yet.
We have not. I've asked the question of OHA. I think it's going to be a tough, based on the data they have, I think it will be a challenge for them to interpret and analyze the data in that way. But we have submitted the request, and we'll see what they provide back to us.
And I think, just as goes to common sense, is I think it's incumbent on each person's own personal responsibility to make sure you're healthy. If you have an underlying medical condition, you may want to take extra precautions. And I remember us growing up, and I see a lot of people in the room who are probably my age, our mothers would tell us, "Cover up your cough. If you sneeze, cover up. Wash your hands. And if you're home, if you're sick, please stay home." As one of our commissioners, I think, is home today. He's observing all of those protocols. So let's just kind of go back to common sense, really good public health. I don't see any other commissioners with comments. We have a huge full agenda today, but any commissioner is one happy to comment? Seeing none, Gary, what's next?
All right, thank you, Philip, very much. Next, Commissioners, a board discussion item: selection of vice chair. Commissioners, per your board policy, you select a vice chair of the commission at the first business meeting of each calendar year. This is a role that is rotated between the other four commissioners. It simply is to serve when Chair Smith is unavailable. That's it. That's the role of the vice chair. So today, as this is your first business meeting of the new calendar year, would you please select who will be vice chair for 2022?
And at this point, I will accept a nomination to move Martha Schrader as vice chair for the next year.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher has moved Martha Schrader as vice chair for the next year, and Commissioner Savis has seconded that motion. Is there any further discussion on this item?
I just want to thank my colleagues for their faith in me in fulfilling this responsibility for the year. I think that my job is to work with all of my commissioners and to move forward with continuity and stability and clear thinking as we move forward through all the things that we've been facing, particularly with COVID. And I look forward to working with each and every one of you. So thank you so much.
I look forward to that as well, Commissioner Schrader, and I'm glad you stepped up and assumed the leadership responsibility. Without seeing other comments, Shannon, could you please call the poll?
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0.
It's always awkward to vote for yourself, by the way.
It is. Gary, what's next?
Very good, thank you. Next, you have two public hearings today, Commissioners. The first public hearing is approval of a Clackamas County supplemental budget resolution for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Sandra Montoya, the county's budget manager, will present. Sandra, welcome. Please go ahead.
I want to, before you start, Sandra, I was remiss in my duties, and I want to apologize to my Commissioner Savis. He has served diligently as vice chair for the past year through all kinds of fire, ice storm, situations with our board, managing our COVID response, the heat wave, and on and on and on. And Commissioner Savis, I want to thank you for supporting the board, supporting me in that leadership role. I look forward to continuing our association for the future. Thank you.
Viva!
Okay.
Yes. Okay, Sandra, you're up.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. Sandra Montoya, Budget Manager. Oregon budget law, found in ORS 294, requires a supplemental resolution before a fund or a department exceeds its budget spending limits. Before you today is a supplemental budget request to increase spending authority in the amount of $24.8 million across 12 funds, or another way to say it, across 17 departments. Eight of the budget requests relate to the American Rescue Plan Act dollars, and the remaining requests relate to the expenditure changes from the adopted budget. I'm happy to answer any specific questions you may have, and I had asked that you would consider the changes.
Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments?
I do have a comment, just for, and you mentioned it, Sandra. We're really recognizing new revenue more than anything else. Of course, we have to apply that revenue, so there's an in and an out. So I just want to make sure the publics who are watching this that we're suddenly not spending $24 million that we received, that extra funding. We have to budgetarily recognize that. So you've said that, but I just want to make it more clear for anyone watching.
Yes, thank you very much. The law does require that the budgets remain balanced, and so these changes do recognize an in and then also request the increased spending authority.
Great. And this is an action that we're required to take for that. Any other Commissioners? Board discussion. I will now open a public hearing on this item. Shannon, do we have any blue cards for the budget, for this budget item?
We do not, Chair.
Do we have anybody online?
We do not have any registered participants for this online.
For this particular one? We do have people online, but not for this item?
Correct.
Okay, good. Well, I will now close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion. So? We have language in our script on the second page. It's my second page. I don't know.
Page 3.
Page 3, thank you.
Okay, I'm trying to find that.
I will move approval for a supplemental budget resolution.
Okay, I will move approval of a hearing on a supplemental budget resolution.
For fiscal year 2021-2022.
22, okay.
Thank you very much. I know sometimes these scripts are confusing.
Yeah.
Yes, may I have a second?
Second.
Yeah. The motion has been made by Commissioner Schrader to approve the supplemental budget and has been seconded by Commissioner Savis. Do we have any further discussion on this budget item? Seeing none, Shannon, please take the poll.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savis?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes 4-0.
Great, thank you, Sandra. Your second public hearing today, Commissioners, is consideration of a petition for the formation of a special district under ORS Chapter 266 to be called the Hoodland Park District. Stephen Madcor, County Counsel, will present.
Thank you, Gary. Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to walk you through briefly what process we're doing this morning. We have a duly noticed public hearing on the formation of a park district. You will have, you'll hear from me, then you'll open the public hearing and hear from proponents, petitioners, potentially opponents. I understand we have Marcy Slater here, who is one of the petitioners, also Regina as well. And they will be speaking to the board on some of the substance of the petition itself. This is a process that's followed in statute, and the petitioners have filed with the county clerk the requisite number of signatures for registered voters within the proposed district. And the statute says this board should hold a public hearing, and they will hear from opponents. You will have the criteria that the board will use to evaluate the boundary change in the district designation. You shall consider local comprehensive planning for the area, economic, demographic, sociological trends, and projections pertinent to the proposal, past and prospective physical development of land that would directly or indirectly be affected by the proposed boundary change. Those are the statutory criteria that this board would use in any boundary change or creation. You also have an opportunity to accept, reject, or modify the proposal itself, including the boundary of the proposed district. The details and the substance of the boundaries, the tax rate, all of those, I would recommend that you wait to hear from the petitioners because those are not county functions. We're merely here as the boundary commission to determine whether it meets those statutory criteria and determine whether or not the lands included in this district will be benefited by the creation of the Parks District itself. Their tax rate was based on a feasibility study, which was included in your packet. The feasibility study, I believe, had 57 cents per thousand. The proposal is 67 cents per thousand, and that is the tax rate that would, if approved, it would be fixed and only changed by another vote of the people within the district in the future itself. So it would be a fixed tax rate. If this board were to approve or modify this proposal going forward, it would go on the May ballot. This board, with the assistance of this office, would draft the ballot language. It would read something along the lines of, "Do you want to create a Hoodland Park District with a tax rate of .67 per thousand for the affected area?" There'd be a summary, there'd be, just like in the voter's pamphlet, arguments in favor, arguments against, and things along those lines. So the, again, the modification of the boundary can be made, but only with certain determinations. And the statute reads, "The board may not modify the boundary to exclude from the proposed district land, and the judgment of the board could be benefited by inclusion of the proposed district. The board may not modify the boundaries to include in the proposed district land that, in this board's judgment, would not be benefited by the inclusion of the district itself." So the district is for, and again, the petitioners will detail that for you in additional, a bit later, but it's for parks and recreation purposes. In their studies, they have mountain bike trails. They have also some open spaces. As part of this process, this board really hasn't been presented with this item in this level of detail before because it's always been presented by the Hoodlands Woman Club. And part of the incentive was that the board had committed to transfer to the Women's Club four pieces of property, the Dorment Center, a water tower, some other properties that are part of the county surplus parks property. Those properties would be transferred to the club if they were successful in forming a Parks District that included this area. We currently have an intergovernmental agreement with this group. It's on, I believe, its third extension. This would be the last extension according to the prior board's determination. So this is the culmination of those efforts itself. It's my understanding that the Chair has already determined that this hearing would be continued until the evening meeting of January 13 at 6:00 p.m. to hear, to give all members of the district, proposed district, ample opportunity to voice their support, concerns, opposition, whatever it might be concerning this particular matter. And that said, I'm here to answer any questions that you might have on some of the details, but that would be the board's function. So no determination made today. If you decide to continue it to the 13th, on the 13th, we would, at that point, evaluate the statutory criteria.
Go ahead. Thank you for that explanation, Stephen. I have a Commissioner in the queue already. And Stephen, when you were reading that, it was on page four of the 75-page packet that Jeffrey Munson sent to Commissioners in their email. It's very informative. Additionally, Christina Fahrenheit sent our responses, our email responses, to you as well. And Everett Wild has offered up some supplemental information in one email and a second email of questions that I particularly asked on this going forward. But before I open the public hearing, I'm going to hold my questions until the presenters have an opportunity to come forward. But Commissioner Savis, you're in the queue.
Yeah. First of all, as you, Mr. Madcor, as you laid this out, that the properties will be transferred to the Women's Club. I gathered that they ultimately will be transferred to the district. Is that not the case, or is the case?
I anticipate that is what is contemplated. The IGA is with the Women's Club, though. I anticipate that is what is contemplated. The I G A is with the Women's Club, though, but yes, it would be, it'd be owned by the district if it were successfully formed and passed by the voters.
Okay, is that, is that clear enough in the proposed ballot language?
There's no proposed ballot language yet. That's just it. The ballot language would only present itself if this board were to move forward with it, and then we would draft the ballot language. We would absolutely include those pertinent details, and it's just like when we wrote the Children's Levy ballot language last year, that same exact process.
Okay. I wanted, the other thing I wanted to mention was, I have a little bit of a unique experience in this regard, and I'm just concerned that, that maybe we need to have a full understanding of what a Parks District is, and some of the, some of the nuances of that, as far as access, service levels, and so forth. Is there anyone in this room that is a Parks District subject matter expert?
You know what, Paul? I think that your question is really good, and we may not have that with us today. However, I think we need to give the folks an opportunity to present to us what they want to do.
Yeah, Chair, yeah, and where I'm going with this is that, you know, based on what Mr. Madcor laid out, I think it's important that if we're going to assist in creating or determining, as Mr. Madcor actually stated, with, you know, the benefit or not for particular areas, I think we need to understand what that means from a Park District level and access, and all those things that Parks Districts basically, I won't say the, I won't say the bible of, but basically, the intent of and how that's really done and performed. I did read the packet thoroughly, every page, and I certainly see that there are a lot of trails and facilities that exist today that would not be property of the district, but would there be partnerships with those particular ownerships, or whoever maintains or owns those particular amenities around this particular area. So I think that, I think it's relevant, so not at this moment, I'm all for listening, but I just want to put that out there right now, that I think we need to understand when we're creating something, that we have an understanding of what that is and how those particular expectations will be accomplished ultimately.
Chair?
Yes.
May I?
Yes.
I neglected to mention that this is formed under O R S 266, which is going to be different than, for example, the North Clackamas Parks and Rec District. This would be a standalone district entity. There'd be no county involvement at all, other than assessing taxes. If the board were to move forward with putting this on the ballot, the group would also have nominations for district commissioners or members from within the district that they would vote on themselves. It'd be like the Soil District, it'd be like the Vector Control District. They would have their independent taxing authority, but no county involvement, other than the transfer of those four properties, just for clarity.
Yeah, and just, and also for that, just to respond to that, is that I, whether it's a 450 or a 266, my questions and interest would be the same.
Yep, okay. All right. Any other comments from Commissioners at this time? I will now open a public hearing. I will note for the record that all those listening, that the board will provide another opportunity to speak for public testimony on this item at the evening business meeting next Thursday at 6:00 P.M. on January 13th. We will look forward to your comments. I have several blue cards in here, and we have the proponents for this coming forward. I met with them at the beginning, before we started the meeting, and they have two representatives whom they would like to send up forward to talk to the, from the majority of the people. I have an additional six cards here, and those folks said they would gladly speak next week. We'll hold those over at their request. This is their request. Also, in the audience is their representative attorney, and he says he would like to listen today and take notes, and then come back next week and answer any of the questions that we may propose, or any of the callers that may propose, and I thought that was a great idea. So next week, Gary, Linkus?
Linkus.
Linkus, you will have an opportunity to address the concerns and questions that come up today, and you will not be limited on time, because I think it's important that we fully vet this issue. Okay, so, yeah, hopefully. So with that in mind, I'm going to call forward Regina Lithgow and Maria Slater, and please come forward and make your presentations. And you know what? I know things have sent, come on, I know things have sounded kind of formal up here, but you know, just talk.
I'll make myself a moment.
Okay, good. You know what? We don't buy, just say what you need to say.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I will speak first.
Please introduce yourself and your area of residence.
My name is Marcy Slater, and I am one of the three chief petitioners for the Hoodland Park petition, which is before you today. I am accompanied by other, two other chief petitioners, Regina Lithgow and Bonnie Hayman, as well as members of the Hoodland Park District Petition Committee and support staff, namely, some husbands are here. State Representative Anna Williams regrets her absence from this hearing and wished to express her support for this petition going forward, as does State Senator Chuck Thompson. Thank you, Commissioners Smith, Savas, Schrader, Fisher, and Scholl, sorry, you're not here, for your attention to this morning, as we tell you about our project, and thank you for the extensions due to the COVID that you have granted on the memorandum of understanding. We appreciate that. As many of you may remember, this journey began several years ago in discussions about the county land known as Hoodland Park across from Welch's School. I recently found that it was named that on a county map. I thought that was kind of neat. After a failed attempt to build a new community center on that site, the old center, the Dormant Center, was taken down, having been condemned. A small group of local citizens and residents thought it would make a great site for a community park. The Mount Hood community doesn't really have an identified gathering place that is public and just for residents. After a few discussions with the County Parks Department, the deed to the land was offered in a memorandum of understanding by the county commissioners if we could form a Park District. Turns out that's the way things work, government entity to government entity. There was a town hall held. When asked if people would pay the tax to have a Park District, almost everyone raised their hand at the meeting. It was inspiring enough to give it a try. So Regina, Bonnie, and I went down to Salem to talk to the Special District Association of Oregon. They gave us Oregon Statute 198, and told us to get an attorney, and sent us on our way. We studied the document and quickly realized why we needed an attorney, and it turns out there really aren't any attorneys who specialize in special districts. So we tried to figure out on our own. We talked to people, reached out to other park districts in the state, gleaned information about budgets, tax rates, creating a boundary for a district, and also heard that we needed a plan for a park if we wanted to show people our ideas. We paid a Portland engineering firm to come up with a plan for a park with the components, components that most people turned, seemed to want. When we thought we might have enough information to get started, we began to meet with people in the community, in their established small groups. We met with Hoodland Women's Club. They were pretty much already on board, as we were all members, and Regina was president at the time. Then we met with other groups. I never knew how many clubs there are on the mountain. We were nervous, but everywhere we went, we received positive feedback and great questions and suggestions. The Garden Club wanted to expand the community garden already on the property. The Lions Club had concerns for safety for children and seniors. The Hoodland Fire District staff wanted to know how they could help. The Oregon Trail School and Welch's School administrators wanted to know how they could partner with the Park District to utilize the Welch's School's space better for the community. They are looking at possible shuttering of part of that school for a lack of use, and they see a partnership with the Park District as being a way to keep the school in the community. The Mount Hood Chamber of Commerce wanted to offer assistance and asked how this could positively impact businesses. Both of the currently operating CPOs on the mountain, Rhododendron and Government Camp generously gave us time on their agendas, more than once, to present information as we knew, and asked what government, and when we asked Government Camp what they would like in their neighborhood, they knew the answer right away. An ice skating rink and a dry land training facility, perfect stuff for a Park District. The HOAs we talked to were glad to have the information and asked, of course, about property tax in such a district. We also found every opportunity to talk to folks in the community. Young people were among the most enthusiastic, as were parents of young children. A safe and local and free place to go to recreate is very popular, it turns out. During this time, we were also posting comments in the local newspapers, and we were printing store, and they were printing stories about the Park District. We also posted our town hall meeting in the paper that we had just before COVID. Every group we've talked to, we have encouraged the people in the meeting to become a candidate for the board, and be on the May ballot, along with the petition. It has always been our goal to see at least one person from each of the villages represented on the board. In the meantime, we somehow got Gary Linkus, a local attorney, to help out. I think Regina was responsible. It turns out that we really did need an attorney after all, and he loves the idea so much, he's helping for free, which is great for us. Really nice. Although COVID, all through COVID, we studied the work and worked on our project. We couldn't meet in big groups, we couldn't hold, we couldn't go to people's groups, well, groups weren't meeting, we couldn't have a town hall, so instead, we stayed home and worked on our project. The more we read about Park Districts around the state and country, the more our minds were expanded with the possibilities beyond just a park across from a school. We began to visualize our components, other components built to suit each neighborhood or village as they needed and wanted. Then, as part of the required due diligence of forming a district in Oregon, we began to work on the feasibility study. A central part of that, as you can imagine, is how are you going to pay for this? We researched grants from, for projects and communities like ours, remote, rural, with vulnerable and underserved populations. Wow. We couldn't believe how much free money there is for that scenario. And the fact that we would have over 200, I mean, two, sorry, 20 acres of land deeded to us would be a great way to show collateral in going after some of this money, and a great way to start. Thank you so much. Then, we really began to imagine the possibilities. The next step was to get serious about the physical legal boundary description. At first, we thought of the Government Camp to Cherryville, following the boundary of the Hoodland Park District, or, sorry, the Hoodland Fire District. It seemed to make sense until we learned that the families who live in Cherryville and Alder Creek are not served by Welch's Schools. That was important, because the livability of a community has to be a livability for everyone, especially young families, and there isn't a lot to hold young families in the Mount Hood community right now. So it wasn't easy, but we found out exactly where the school, the Welch's School bus goes, and that is how we set our boundary. If the school bus comes to your house or your neighborhood, you're in Hoodland Park District, just west of Sleepy Hollow to just east of Government Camp. We also thought about what villages or neighborhoods are included when we talk about Library District. We also, and we wanted to be inclusive. That meant including everyone in the Park District, who is included in the School District. No one should be left out. This community is bound tightly by a delicate microeconomy based on tourism and a mountain sports industry that depends on the people who live in the community to provide the services necessary to keep this economy rolling. It is a socio-economic bond, and one of the main reason, rules in determining district boundaries, as your county council suggested earlier. When thinking about the tax rate, we chose a rate that we felt could sustain us in times of slow growth, but also could show the ability to match funds when needed. We figured the Hoodland Park project would be one of the largest single projects to be taken on by the district, found out how much that would cost, researched possible grants, how much it would be to, needed for preliminary work and engineering costs, and came up with about $600,000 a year maximum budget, which translates to 67 cents per thousand assessed value. The average price of a home at the time was about $300,000. Boy, that's changing fast. So the average tax implication would be around $200 a year per household. As most people know, a district does not have to draw the maximum each year. Case in point is our Library District this year. They did not. That is why the budget in the feasibility study is based on 57 cents per thousand assessed value. Once we had the petition written, the feasibility study completed, and the legal boundary approved by the State Revenue Department, we were ready to collect signatures. We had two weeks and five days to collect almost 800 good signatures. So, we knew we had to really collect a thousand to make sure we had enough. First, we collected willing volunteers to train as petition circulators. We had over 30 people come forward. We had crazy weather and a lot of ground to cover, but in the end, we collected over 1,100 signatures, 87% or 986 of which were accepted by the elections office, and we needed 793. So we well cleared our goal. That means over one-fifth of the voting residents of the Mount Hood communities came out in terrible weather to find a petitioners, a petition circulator, so they could sign the petition, many of whom said they wanted it to go to the ballot. They wanted to have the discussion. It seems to send a clear message that voters were able to, that they wanted the, the opportunity to have a conversation over the next several months about the merits of the Park District, and then they want to be able to have a voice on the May ballot. It is a rare thing these days for a community to come to a county or a state, and instead of asking for a bailout, ask for a way to generate their own revenue for their own projects. So here we are, at the next step in the process of getting this important petition to the voters in May. As you know, you can put this on the ballot as written, and over 1,100 people signed it, and you can send this ballot with changes, or you can reject it. I just want to read one statement from the feasibility study, the last paragraph of the narrative. "In conclusion, it is safe to say that the formation of the governmental district to centralize and organize planning, development, and implementation of recreational programming for the Hoodland area is way overdue. Without its own centralized local government agency, the Hoodland area struggles to behave like an integrated community. There is certainly no structured vehicle capable of giving voice to responsive action to the many needs and concerns of the uniquely diverse people of the Hoodland area in a unified way. Developing a locally operated Park District will bring to this diverse community an identity based on mutual desire to gather and recreate together. A cohesion results, and out of that cohesion comes a much more effectual community based on, to meet the needs of its people."
Thank you very much, and you could submit that written testimony via email, too. Anybody in the room can do that. Regina, please introduce yourself and state your area of residence.
Hello, I'm Regina Lithgow. I am one of the chief petitioners. I'm a homeowner of several residential properties on the mountain, and I live in Welch's. Thank you all for this opportunity to be here today. Thank you, Commissioners, for your time and efforts. They're very important to the mountain community. The Hoodland Park District Petition Initiative for the Mount Hood area communities is waiting to be approved for the May 22, 2022 ballot. Parks improve livability in neighborhoods and communities. Parks help keep property values healthy. They provide opportunities to keep schools open as families look for communities to live in that have good schools and parks. live in that have good schools and parks. My career in real estate as a Realtor on Mount Hood started in 1985. My motto, "I know the mountain," is true to the letter. I know buyers want to find a home in a healthy community, a place they can find quality education, adequate and safe housing, employment opportunities, access to public transportation, and recreational opportunities. They want healthy, clean, and safe physical environments and access to healthcare. A little history about the parkland. In the mid-1960s, the Hoodland Women's Club spearheaded building a large A-frame and tennis court on Sanon River Road as a community center for the mountain area folks to be used by everybody on the mountain. It was the place for the Women's Club meetings. Years went by, and the property was named the Dorman Center in honor of Bob and Althea, who maintained our relationship between the Women's Club and the Clackamas County Parks Department for our rights to lease the land. In 2014, the Hoodland Women's Club no longer could afford the liability, the viability and upkeep of the former Dorman Center, which was also home to the Hoodland Senior Center, the Hoodland Library, the Mount Hood Preschool, and the Daycare Center. At that time, the Women's Club worked on a grassroots campaign for grant money and matching funds to rebuild the community center and the playground. It was then that I saw a huge opportunity that couldn't be passed by, and I wanted to be part of that effort. I once again became a Hoodland Women's Club member and took part in selling flower baskets as fundraising to pay for a grant writer. Grant funding was limited to the Women's Club because they were not a formerly recognized entity as a park district would be. In September 2017, the building became unfeasible to maintain or repair, and sadly, the county removed the property, I mean, the building. Again, I was not going to let this opportunity just slip away. We needed a park and a community center for the needs of the Mount Hood community. Knowing of this opportunity, in 2017, I became president of the Women's Club and organized the ladies to work with me through the County Parks Department to find a better way to keep this property viable for all the mountain communities. In February 2018, we were offered the Memorandum of Understanding from the County Commissioners, stating that if we formed a park district and have voters approve it, they would give us the deed to the land. Most generous offer ever. Thank you. We became the catalyst for the Hoodland Park District Committee. In February 2018, we were offered the Memorandum of Under- oh, I'm sorry, to inform and notify citizens about the park district proposal, the improvements and discussions of what it would mean to residents and visitors to form the park district. We have expressed and introduced in public forums, president, present, presented Rhoda Dendron and Government Camp CPOs. We may also made presentations to HOAs. We have a park district website, Facebook, social media, brochures, pamphlets, and nonprofit organizations we went to, and businesses, Welch's School, and we've been in local newspapers since 2018 that include the Mountain Times and the Sandy. There were many months during and after COVID-19 quarantine where we were unable to hold any public meetings or gatherings to further discussions or other than the newspaper and the social media. This, this, the time we worked on our feasibility study. Hoodland Park District Committee engagement with Government Camp is correspondence with the Government Camp CPO since our first park presentation in November 2019. At that time, Marcy Slater, Bonnie, and I presented the park proposal and asked for questions, concerns, and for volunteers to participate in the planning process. This was before COVID. We passed out our pamphlets and our information, and former commissioners Ken Hubbardson and Jim Bernard, who were in attendance, spoke on half of the park proposal. We received no help at that time, or volunteers from Government Camp to be involved since that meeting, at that meeting. I wrote a follow-up letter to the president and assured him we were pursuing our goal and looking for people in Government Camp who would want to be part of the vision. I directed him to our website for all further questions and concerns they might have. These are all my emails to Government Camp CPO. We were doing our due diligence. In April of 2021, we requested another meeting with the CPO in Government Camp. No meeting was scheduled, no feedback received. In October of 2021, we sent an email with attachments to the Government Camp CPO with information about the park district petition and the process, and we received a response from the president to inform us for the first time that the Government Camp CPO members were not in agreement. As stated by Marcy, there are many reasons why this park district is beneficial to all the mountain communities, and nobody should be left out. These communities have been connected with one another since the Bartlett Trail came through in 1846. Like many families on the mountain, including those who live in Government Camp, we also send our kids to Welch's School. We have enjoyed recreation and enhanced livelihoods with our kids on the mountain, joining ski racing teams through Mighty Mites and ski programs at Timberline. We are all locally intertwined through employment opportunities, doctors, dentists, grocery stores, hair salons, libraries, et cetera. Our entire community on the mountain, through taxes, share the financial burdens and responsibilities of community services. We've gotten a lot of miles and money from selling those flower baskets in 2014. To this day, the Hoodland Park District Committee, in less than three weeks from, for the November 18 deadline, petitioned over 1,136 signatures. 986 were valid, all within the proposed district from Sleepy Hollow, Brightwood, Welch's, Zigzag, Rhoda Dendron, Government Camp, to Wapanesha. We have stipulated the need of seven elected representatives to be on the board, one from each community inside the district, who are full-time residents and registered voters. Our district is geographically smaller than the Hoodland Fire District, but encompasses residents who are served by Welch's School. Mount Hood is receiving a gift on a platter with opportunities never experienced before. It will build continuity among all citizens, provide taxpayer-owned entities with local control. Our tax dollars will stay on the mountain and be designated for all park improvements along with many grant monies we can obtain only as a district. A healthy community has the greatest impact when people can have physical activity and increases social connection and sense of community where we can learn, work, pray, and play. I understand that some Government Camp homeowners wish to be excluded from the park district boundary. I fear that removing Government Camp would set a precedent, creating an isolated area of eastern Clackamas County. Other services for our communities, such as library, fire district, and school district, encompass Government Camp and properties to the east. It's time for our commissioners to approve the Hoodland Park District petition, as it was signed by over 1,136 residents, and allow the voters in the community to decide on the Hoodland Park District. Thank you very much for your time.
Wow. You made it under the time allotted. I'm impressed.
Well, I tried to speak fast.
Six seconds to go, Goodmore.
I allot my time to-
Yeah, and like I said, the folks who have not testified today, who have yielded their time, may have the opportunity again next week on the blue cards. Now, just because you filled out a blue card for today for next week, you may want to fill out another one in case some of those people, for some reason, unforeseen reason, aren't able to attend. I would appreciate if you would do that. It's easier on us to make sure that everybody who wants to testify can get a chance to testify. Shannon, who do we have? We have a bunch of people in the Zoom link. How many do we have in the Zoom link for this item?
We have another 13 people registered and many online.
Uh, for the Hoodland Park?
Yes.
Okay, and do we have some CPO folks and?
Yes, we have two from the CPOs.
Let's start out with those, and you can manage it from here on down.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Sorry. First up is Jacob Thompson from the Government Camp CPO. Mr. Thompson, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Hello, commissioners. Thanks for taking the time for my oral testimony. I'm Jacob Thompson, a homeowner in Government Camp, but I'm not here today representing myself. I'm here today representing the community of Government Camp, Summit Meadows, and Wapanesha, who want you to modify this petition and omit ZIP code 97028 from its boundaries. After tremendous email interest and confusion on this petition, Government Camp CPO Chair Nick Reiner reached out to me, asking if I could help the community further understand the petition and where the community stood on the issue. There certainly was overwhelming opposition via email, but we wanted to further understand the community's true voice. I agreed to establish a subcommittee and objectively assess these items. I want to stress to the commissioners that our subcommittee's main goal was to objectively study the petition and measure how our community felt. Every one of our subcommittee members is active in the area and only one to represent our committee's true voice. Our subcommittee's full report was submitted via written testimony. Our objective survey was completed with tremendous participation, 156 responses in the ZIP code, representing 156 distinct addresses. Overall, 84% of those responses opposed the petition and do not believe there is value in being included. In addition to the objective measure, I have personally had more than 100 interactions via email, phone, campfire chats. I can honestly tell you that there is not only objective opposition to being included in this park district, there is a feeling of resentment and that 97028 was snuck into this petition. In my interactions, I have tried to reassure folks that there is a fair process outlined in the statute, and there will be a mechanism to, quote, "right the ship." Well, today is that day. As you can see in our written testimony, we've outlined numerous reasons on why you should modify the petition and remove 97028 from the boundaries. We've tried our best to organize these in accordance with ORS 199462. Due to my three, three-minute time allotment, I won't go through all of those, but I do want to orally talk about four key points.
Um, Jacob?
Yes?
Yes, since you're a CPO member, you're not limited to three minutes. You can continue with your presentation.
All right, thank you.
You're right.
First, there has been extensive and formal planning in Government Camp, as documented on the county's website. Many successes have been had due to this inclusive and diligent process. Nowhere in these plans or in subsequent planning conversations has a park district been identified as an opportunity. In fact, as the petitioners stated earlier, there's only been one CPO meeting where the petition was discussed. It was discussed on November 9th, 2019, over two years ago. At that meeting, the idea was proposed, a survey was conducted by the petitioners, but the results have never been shared. As the petitioners explained today, no one from Government Camp was interested in volunteering in the effort, consistent with our survey. There was not support. However, the petitioners filed the petition, including 97028, before ever engaging the CPO group again. Second, economically, this special district would be the second highest amongst eight special districts. 97028 represents approximately 23% of the revenue in the petition, but only represents 4% of the voting base. This disparity will continue to grow as more homes are being built in the, in the ZIP code and land developments are being proposed. Third, the petitioners failed to explain how the demographic in 97028 would benefit from this special district, a second park in Welch's. The community tried to get this information from the petitioners at the November 13th, 2021 CPO meeting, but they refused to answer any questions from the community. We do know there are very few children who live in 97028 because it's estimated that 79% are second homeowners. There's no known demographic that will benefit 97028 from this special district. Fourth, and most importantly, there certainly is objective data showing high opposition from the community. Forcing an opposing community with very low voting rights into this special district will not be productive to future projects and planning that needs collaboration. In summary, our community is trusting you, the commissioners, will make the right decision. The right decision is to remove 97028 from this petition, let the petition go to vote for the local community members who will actually use this second park. Then in the future, if there's an opportunity for 97028 to join the special district because there is shared benefit, then we can cross that bridge. The statute allows for that to happen. The people of 97028 want to better the community, but this petition will do just the opposite. I thank you for your service to our county, and I'm happy to answer questions from my oral testimony or the subcommittee's written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Jacob. I suggest you submit your testimony in writing to our email that's available. Commissioner Slater?
Yeah, I guess my question is, are the majority of the homes in Government Camp second homes? So people are recreating up there. I know, I'm going to say this before, having been here for a very long time, that this parks district has been in the works since I've been here, since 2003. And I always like to gently remind the Government Camp folks that the county had an urban renewal district there, which has provided you with Collins Lake, heated sidewalks, improvements to the museum. And I'm really not understanding why, since we have really done so much for that particular area, why they would be so adverse to actually, this is just my personal opinion, to adding a park amenity that I honestly think would be used. But that's just me saying that, and that we have done in the past tremendous work in Government Camp, and Government Camp would not be, in my estimation, the destination point it is today. And we are still working with a number of the ski areas there to make sure that there are, you know, there's access to Timberline and access for the ski area. And it's a tourism destination, and it would seem to me that being included in a park district would actually be an added amenity for tourism up there. So I'm just saying this because of the past history and knowing that we have invested, as a county, tremendous amount of time, effort, dollars, and money in Government Camp.
Commissioner Slater, I can answer a couple of your questions if you'd like.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, go ahead. Up to the chair. Go ahead, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yes, Jacob, go ahead.
Yep. As part of our objective study, we asked if, if you were a registered voter, and thus we have that objective data. So of the 156 responses, 79% were not registered voters, so you could assume that 79% are second homeowners.
Okay.
And then I'd like to comment, having talked to folks, the community is immensely appreciative on the county's work that's being done.
Right.
As the council said when he opened, this special park district is not a county program. This is a, going to be a special park district outside of the county process, and the people have been appreciative for all of those things you mentioned because they benefit 97028. The, the, the people in 97028 do not see how a second park in Welch's, Oregon, is going to benefit their community.
Okay.
It's that simple. There's no documented benefit to 97028 on why a second park. We're not against the petition. As it sits, we just want to be excluded.
Okay. Okay, Jacob, like I said, send over the results of the poll or whatever questionnaire that you sent out for the board to look at.
It's already there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Shannon, we have another CPO member, and we will give, not limit him to three minutes either.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Uh, Nick Renard from the Hoodland Park District. Please unmute yourself. Oh, CPO, sorry. You state your name and residence.
Uh, yes, hello. Nick Reiner, Government Camp CPO Chair, resident of Government Camp.
Go ahead.
So I would like to add my perspective as the Government Camp CPO Chair. I am not testifying as an individual at this time. Our CPO has- Our CPO has had his share of controversial topics. Usually, groups within Government Camp disagree. Not so in this case. Government Camp CPO members are quite united in their opposition to being included in the Parks District, whether they are full-time, local residents, part-time vacation homeowners, or local business owners. For the many reasons shared at this meeting and via written testimony from the Government Camp CPO Subcommittee, an overwhelming majority of people I represent do not want to be included in the Parks District. They feel they are being taken advantage of in an unfair case of taxation without representation. They feel there is no compelling benefit to a park located quite a distance away in a separate community. They feel the parkland around Mount Hood is recreation enough. Recent closure of Highway 26 just this week highlights how isolated Government Camp can feel from separate communities located in the valley. Commissioners, if this Parks District is allowed to form over community members who overwhelmingly oppose it, then the resulting resentment will jeopardize any future cooperation that will be needed to solve bigger issues. For example, we will need to address wildfire preparedness and transportation solutions by working together as separate communities in the future. I have represented Government Camp for 18 years, first on the TIF Committee, and now as CPO Chair. I understand how important it is to cultivate trust and goodwill with all our mountain neighbors. We have just recently achieved a fragile peace on the mountain regarding equitable representation from the fire district. Let us not disturb the current peace by allowing this Parks District proposal to include communities who adamantly oppose inclusion. As a county policy advisor Everett Wild said, quote, "It is easier to join the Parks District than to get out of it once it has formed." If or when there is a viable park facility proposed in Government Camp, folks might be inclined to change their position, but that is not the case now. Commissioners, the communities I represent do not have the voting power to oppose being included in the Parks District. Only you can exclude them now. It is the fair and right thing to do. If the Government Camp, Summit Meadows, and Wapanesha communities are not excluded from this Parks petition, it will reinforce the long-held perception that people's voices here are irrelevant. There are two types of helplessness. One, when the community cannot get what it needs or wants, and two, when the community cannot stop what it doesn't need or want. It is in the best interest of all mountain communities to preserve peace and the promise of future cooperation that you exclude ZIP code 97028 from the Parks District. As a clarifying point, I want to highlight the voting status of those who took the survey and the support versus opposition breakdown accordingly. Even among registered voters in Government Camp, 76% of those surveyed objected to being included in the Parks District. Some have questioned if opposition lies primarily with second homeowners, who may not see the benefit of inclusion within the Parks District, but the survey results show that even full-time residents do not see the value in being included and indeed want to be excluded from the Parks District. Thank you for the opportunity to present on behalf of Government Camp CPO.
Uh, thank you. Commissioners, I'm going to refer your attention to an email dated January 6 at 9:11 a.m. from one of our staff people, just the results of emails that have come into our office. As, I'm not sure when the cutoff date on this was. Thirty-three residents, or 53%, opposed the petition for the formation of the special district. Twenty-nine residents, or 47%, in support of formation of the park district. I suppose that could change as this becomes more, more, but so far, there's opposition to this. I just want to let you folks know that. Additionally, Shannon, how many more people do we have that want to talk?
Uh, we have 15 more registered this week, and then we will ask for the raised hands.
Okay, 15 more people times three minutes, Gary is...
Forty-five more minutes.
Twenty-five?
Forty-five more minutes.
Forty-five. I'm going to limit their testimony today because we have the consent agenda to consider. We have people in the room who are here to testify on other matters not involved in the park district. Like I say, there will be a continuation of this hearing for next week. Shannon, we're going to limit that testimony to 60 seconds. Now, if it's not enough time for them to make their points, as always, they are invited to send an email to clackamas@bcc.us. Is that correct?
BCC@clackamas.us.
I had it opposite. Yeah, BCC@clackamas.us. Sorry about that. BCC@clackamas.us is our email. So, we're going to limit that to 60 seconds. So if you would go ahead and moderate this portion.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Chair. If anyone's on Zoom but did not have a chance to register ahead of time and would like to testify, please select the raised hand feature. I'll call on the registered participants first and then raised hands in the order that they were received. First up is Denise Gelfe. Please, you have one minute.
Dennis.
Dennis, I'm so sorry. Dennis Gelfe, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence. You have one minute.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. 60 seconds will not give me enough time to say what I was going to say. I timed it to three minutes. So I have a question for you that, can I postpone my discussion until next Thursday at 6:00 p.m.? Yes or no?
Yes.
Well, you can, but I'm not going to guarantee that anybody's going to get three minutes because we are limited on time. We, the commissioners...
Okay.
Sir, just let me finish. Sir, we are willing to stay past our appointed times to continue all county business, but this is the first meeting of the new year since the commission has been off. We have a lot of regular county business to conduct as well. Next week, we will try to, Gary, I'm hoping we can schedule the hearing to allow for more testimony, but we have actual county business, not that this isn't county business, mind you, but management structures to continue with today. Sir, you can take your chances. Well, you can call up again next week if you want to. I don't care. So do your 60 minutes or 60 seconds today, and then come back next week.
I like the 60-minute statement. But anyway, what I was going to say is, you know, unfortunately, we're at a disadvantage because we do not have a CPO in this particular geographical area, and yet you've given time to two CPO members up in Government Camp. So again, I think that's a disadvantage on our part, and I will defer my testimony till next week, and I appreciate the work that you guys all do in the county commission. Thank you.
You betcha. Take care. Next?
Sorry. Next up is George Bailey. George, you have one minute. Please unmute yourself, state your name and residence. George Bailey? You need to unmute yourself? State your name and residence.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Hello? Can you hear me now? Yeah.
Yes, we can hear you.
So, yeah, George Bailey, Welch's, Oregon. I actually live near the street, and I had a similar question in regards to the dual use of parks. We already have Wildwood Park, which is very efficient providing this area, and I feel taxation's a little bit too high at this point in our area. And for those on fixed incomes, I think we're going to have a problem with tax rates with the housing boom that's occurring now. So those on fixed incomes and as myself recently laid off, this is going to be a heavy tax burden. So that's just my main point. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Up next? Up next is Rick Slaven. Rick, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence. You have one minute.
Hi, Rick Slaven. I'm a Government Camp homeowner. Good morning, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners. I'm here on behalf today of our family to express opposition to the petition for the formation of a special park district under ORS Chapter 266 to be called the Hoodland Park District as it is currently presented. Two quick topics for consideration. One, modification before vote. I respectfully request that you modify the petition to exclude property within 97028 ZIP code identified with corresponding USPS Land Survey System map section submitted as the property description. The petition as it is currently presented inaccurately represents the interests and beneficiaries of the Hoodland Park District as proposed. Referenced supporting data objectively collected and submitted via, to the board and county commissioners via Government Camp CPO Special Hoodland Park District Committee as written testimony on January 5, 2022. Secondly, objection to the record. I would also respectfully like to raise the objection to the record.
Thank you. Thank you, Rick. You know, you can show up next week again. Maybe we'll have more time. Commissioner Savis, you're in the queue.
Yeah, I just, I was just hoping maybe that from here on, folks that can identify themselves by their ZIP code or where they live, where they reside, that might help discern that between property owners and people who actually live in the area. It'd just be a point of interest for me. So if anyone could at the very beginning just identify what ZIP code you reside in, I'd appreciate it. You don't have to, but it'd be nice.
Okay, go ahead, Jen.
Next up is Joseph Hamon. Joseph, please unmute yourself, state your name, residence, and ZIP code if you'd like. You have one minute.
Uh, my name is Joseph Hamon. I, I'm a resident of Camas, Washington, but I've recreated in the Mount Hood area for the last 45 years. I've owned a home in Government Camp for 25 years. I'm going to go real quick because I know I only have 60 seconds. I guess I'm a little confused why we dwell on the distinction between residents and non-resident owners. We're really one community. We're of the same mind in opposition to the formation of this Parks District. We all pay the same amount of taxes, so I won't belabor that. Again, I'm going to move quickly. I won't get to all of my points, but I would like to refer specifically to, on page seven of Exhibit 5 of the proposal, under the bullet point under Parks and Recreation Goals, Parks and Recreation Goals states, "Establish an equitable means of financing parks and recreation facilities and programs," including in our community...
Thank you very much, Joseph Hamon. If you'd like to make a further point, please email that in, and we will look at it. Next, Shannon.
Up next is F. Scott Farley. I'm so sorry, I'm mispronouncing names today. Mr. Farley, please unmute yourself, state your name, residence, and ZIP code if you'd like. You have one minute.
Uh, F. Scott Farley, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. I've had, with my family, a lot in Government Camp since 1997. We built our house there in 2000. I have five family members who all live in Clackamas County and will all be able to vote for county commissioners, but not necessarily on this proposal, so I'm concerned about that. But this is really about the assessment, and it's about the increase in the value. And what the petitioners didn't admit in their petition is that valuations go up, and so does the amount that our heirs, if they're going to keep and have access to this property, will have to pay if they inherit this property. And my grandkids love the place, but they will not spend a whit of time at a park in Welch's. They've got a giant park that they love in Government Camp with trails with everything they need. Anyway, thank you. We strongly support the written testimony by Nick, by Jake Thompson earlier...
Thank you very much. I understand you support Jacob Thompson. Okay, next.
Up next is Ronald Stewart. Ronald, please unmute yourself, state your name and residence and ZIP code if you'd like. You have one minute.
Uh, my name is Ronald Stewart. I live in Welch's, ZIP code 97067. In one minute, I cannot cover everything I intended to. I will be submitting via email the full content of my objection, but I am opposed to this petition and would like to see it squelched at this point and not move forward. The basis of my objection is there simply isn't a need for a park or Parks District in this area. The one point I will try to make in the time I have is, in their effort to gather support for this proposal, the backers have repeatedly stressed the consequences should the proposal fail, specifically that the parcels pledged by the county would be sold for development. In doing so, they have played quite effectively on the real and natural concern of most of us living in the Hoodland area, development. Yet they do not say what development those parcels might look like if sold. I believe this is intentional because if you examine the zoning for each of the parcels...
Thank you very much. Thank you much, Ronald. Next?
Up next is Mary Jacob. Mary, please unmute yourself, state your name, residence, and ZIP code. You have one minute.
Hi, Mary Jacob. I'm a resident of Government Camp. I'm a voter in 97028. I represent an HOA of 30 members here, all of which want to be excluded from this Parks District. We felt that this was not presented to us early enough, often enough, enough detail. We felt that we were taken for granted for the tax base up here with very little benefit to our area. It was mentioned that this district is like schools and fire. Those are necessities. This park district is not a necessity, it's a luxury. We have no benefit to Government Camp for this. We are surrounded by a park up here virtually. There are a lot of duplications and a lot of very expensive duplications in this proposal also. I feel that Wildwood Park, the county park behind the schools, the schools, where the Doorman Center was, where the community gardens were, could be used and improved to better...
Thank you very much, Mary. I appreciate it. Please send the rest of your testimony via email. Up next?
Up next is Matthew Drake. Matthew, please unmute yourself, state your name, residence, and ZIP code. You have one minute.
I'm Matthew Drake, resident of Government Camp 97028. Between myself and my family, I've been a resident in Government Camp since the late 1940s. Also reside in Portland, ZIP code 97021, or 210, excuse me. There's not much I can add to the testimony already provided, particularly that of Jacob and Nick. I do want to address one comment made by the petitioners having to do with the economic feasibility of an ice rink in Government Camp. An ice rink in Government Camp is no more feasible in Government Camp than it is at the Lloyd Center, which is why it's being closed. This is not a good use of the land up here, nor public funds, and it will not be economically viable. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Next up is Joan Kiefer. Joan, please unmute yourself, state your name, residence, and ZIP code. You have one minute. Joan, are you, can you unmute yourself or speak up?
Let's come back to her.
Okay.
Yeah, give her an opportunity to weigh in.
All right. Up next is going to be Andrew... So sorry, just one moment. Andrew Tagliafico, I'm so sorry, Andrew. You have, please unmute yourself, state your name, residence, and ZIP code. You have one minute.
My name is Andrew Tagliafico. I'm a resident of Government Camp 97028, and I'm asking that the county board of commissioners modify this petition. You know, at present, Government Camp pays for a lot of services within the county that they don't receive. You know, there's no snow removal provided to us, but Welch's seems to receive it. Lake Oswego also. This more or less seems like a taking of the community of Government Camp for a Parks District that may not benefit them. Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Up next is Michael Beckman. Michael, please unmute yourself, state your name, residence, and ZIP code. You have one minute.
Michael Beckman, lifetime resident of Government Camp for 67 years, 97028. I'm against this, but I want to make a quick correction. People are in the misunderstanding that the development up here was funded by Clackamas County. It was not. It was funded by a tax increment financing district...
Correct.
...that was managed by the county commission and the URA, Urban Renewal Agency, but it was funded completely by development in Government Camp, not tax monies taken from anyone else. I have a whole bunch of other stuff I'll talk about, but it looks like it'll have to go in an email.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah, clarification. Clarification, Commissioner Schrader?
Yeah, that is absolutely...
Yeah, that's, that is absolutely true, but it was our development agency that managed, uh, all the development up there, uh, for the amenities that were there, but that is a correct statement. It was a tax increment financing district. The question of whether or not it would have moved forward without the, uh, without the help of the county, you know, to do the improvements, you know, it's, it's more of the point I just kinda wanna make.
Sure.
But that, that is the correct mechanism, so...
Thank you. Shannon, please continue.
Gerald Murphy, you are up next. Please state your name, residence, and zip code. You have one minute.
Hi, my name is Gerald Murphy, or Murph. I'm at, uh, it, I'm a member or a resident of Rhododendron, 97049, actually closer to Brightwood in Timberline Rim Recreation Club. Timberline Rim Recreation Club has been paying, members have been paying dues since 1968 for the recreation that's provided by Timberline Rim. Um, I would also like to note that on the north side of Timberline Rim, uh, we have to drive past the waste, uh, Barlow Wayside Park, which is a Clackamas County park that's been maintained by the Mount Hood stewardship. This does not tax anybody. This is a volunteer group that helped put this park together and maintains it to this day. I don't see any need for an urbanized park to be going in across street from Welch's, Oregon. There is, uh, across from the school in Welch's, Oregon. I just don't see the need for this.
Thank you, Gerald.
We're up here recreating the forest.
Thank you, Gerald. Up next?
Uh, we're gonna try Joan Kiefer again. Joan, if you could unmute yourself. State your name, residence, and zip code. You'll have one minute.
Go ahead, Shannon. We'll, we'll come back at the end. Or is this the end?
Nope, we've got a little bit more.
Okay.
Um, the first hand raised is Heather Ostrander. Heather, please unmute yourself. State your name, residence, and zip code. You have...
Yeah, how many additional hand raised are there?
I have two hands raised, one of which has already spoken today.
Okay, then that person is not gonna speak again today.
He was the person that chose not to speak.
How do you know that?
Cause he said so. Remember, the, he was the early person that said, "I don't have enough time."
He said he was gonna speak next week, Paul.
He did.
He did, okay.
Apparently he changed his mind.
How do you know he changed his mind?
His hands up.
Shannon, go to the people who have not spoken yet.
Okay. Heather, please state your name, residence, and zip code. You have one minute. Heather Ostrander. There you go. I see that you're muting and unmuting, but you are currently muted. There you go. Sorry, we cannot hear you.
So go back to the other gentleman that has his hand up that may change his mind. Dennis, please...
Yeah, this is Dennis Gelfi again at 97067. The CPO in government camp had come, came up with some points, and they indicated that they had 156 responders to their survey, but they also listed 885 parcels of land that are in that zip code, which this represents actually only a 20 cent response to their survey. They also are critical of the lack of communications of the petitioners, but do, but do not, do note that this proposal was presented to CPO in November 2019. Then they go on to say that the next communications didn't occur until the petition had been filed. I'd like to point out that the communications with the rest of the area being considered for inclusion in this park district was accomplished through local monthly community paper, the Mountain Times, and with CPO, and while the CPO waited till now to call the, uh, basically in the 11th hour before they expressed their opposition to this proposal, and then blamed the petitioners for not communicating with them when the rest of the community seemed to grasp what was happening. The last point I'd like to make is to bring a CPO, that the CPR contends that the residents of government camp will not travel 12 miles to utilize a park facility...
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Do you want to give Heather Ostrander one more chance?
Yes, and Joan Eber as well.
Okay. Heather, if you could state your name, residence, and zip code, you'll have one minute.
Is she there?
She is there and unmuted, but we cannot hear her.
Okay, Heather, we can't hear you. Um, we have, uh, next week available if you would like to, um, call in or show up, and also you can send your testimony by email. And I, for one, am reading them. I'm sure my other commissioners are too. Anybody else, Shannon?
Uh, we're gonna try Joan Kiefer one last time. Joan, if you could unmute yourself. State your name, residence, and zip code. You will have one minute.
Okay, thank you very much. Is that it for the testimony?
Registered for this section, yes, Chair. Thank you.
Um, the, um, Tammy Little, our tax assessor, has come up with some numbers upon my request, and in this particular boundary proposal, there are 7,000, approximately 7,000 properties to be taxed, and the number of tax locks in 97028 zip code, which includes the communities of government camp, Summit Meadows, and Waffen, Waffenita?
Wapanisha.
Wapanisha, is 900. I do have some questions. Do we close the hearing now, Gary?
Yes.
Well, you're not gonna be closing the hearing. You're gonna continue it to next week, if you recall correctly.
Oh, we're gonna continue it, that's right.
Yeah.
I wasn't sure exactly of the procedure. I've gone through and I've done a lot of reading, and I particularly have some questions too. Um, here's a map, uh, that our staff put together, and commissioners, you have it in your emails. And there is a term in government when you're proposing boundaries in communities, and it's called cherry picking, or cherry stem, a cherry stem. And it appears to me, in the formation of the boundaries of this district, and I'm asking the question, and it's for you to, you know, make a comment on it next week. A majority of the, your people seem to be in this area, um, in the Rhododendron, Welch's, Hoodland area, for lack of a better term, okay? But yet, as one caller says, you're traveling 12 miles up this to capture government camp, and then you're heading back down to Highway, uh, 35 to Wapanisha, very few residents. And so you're capturing, you're in a big swath of area, and I, um, am struggling to find in my mind the benefit that those two communities would have in the formation of this district. I do have something else I wanna say, and I, in the form of a question, Stephen, or maybe the other attorney. Um, now you talk about the formation of the fire districts, but my question is this, can we equate the fire district, which serves to support the health, safety, welfare, and emergency services to this area, as the same of a recreation district or a park, which is for the pleasure of the residents in this district? In my mind, I do not equate the two as the same. So the justification for drawing the boundary lines for one for the other, I would, I'm open to hearing that particular justification for that. Again, one is for the health, safety, welfare, and emergency services, which is, I think, you guys can, next week, you have an opportunity. Your attorney will speak for you next week, as we already agreed that would happen, okay?
Sorry, I thought you were asking a question.
No, I am asking the question, but I want you to have time to prepare for your answers to come back next week, and your attorney can, and if you two wanna testify again next week too, that's, it's their purview, okay? Because everybody's gonna get a chance to speak who wants to speak on this, okay? Uh, that is my, um, on that. Now, commissioners, we have this really long packet in here, and I was struck by a memo that was dated February 1st, 2018, and it's a staff memo. Um, and it says the purpose and the outcomes. Um, it says, uh, "To form and approve a park district which would allow the BCS County Parks to transfer certain surplus property assets to a newly formed local park district in the Hoodland, Welch's area." And I see nothing in this memo about government camp, and I'm going back to original intent. And this is what we're doing, and this is a very long packet. Anybody can have it. So I do believe the original intent was to take these properties, these four properties, and the, and the county says, yes, we're gonna take them, form that, but it seems to me, and I'd like a justification for that too, does this go against, when did this change? I don't know. I did not become the chair of this commission until January of last year, so whatever conversations happened before that is maybe something that needs to be in review for my edification and the board's edification as well. Stephen, uh, you mentioned again on page four of the packet that the commission may determine land, uh, not included and not being to the benefit of this particular district. That is something I think we need to look at based on the overwhelming amount of testimony that has come in opposition to this. Now, it could change by next week, next Thursday, when we have a, uh, an opportunity to view this. I don't know what we're going to decide, but we're going to take our time because we want to get this right. And, um, do any other commissioners have any other comments to make on this at this point? Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah. One question for Stephen, and then some other questions that I've, um, have come up during the course of today that I'm hoping to get answered for next time if people can address it. But Stephen, we have the authority to change the boundaries when we approve this, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, that was my first question. And then my second question, um, I don't know if people will be able to answer these, but, um, I'm wondering, I understand government camp is opposed. Is there anything about a parks district that would garner their support? Would there be anything, any way to change this that would be of benefit to them? I get the idea that it increases taxes, that is a concern. I also get that the park would be 12 miles away, but I'm wondering if there's anything else, um, that would garner the support of the people that reside or have second homes in government camp? That was my first question. And then the second question I would really like, and oh, I hated the one minute, I gotta say, it's like, oh, I really wanna hear the rest of this testimony, but the idea of there's these parcels and there's, um, some communications in the community that they will be used for development if they'd not become a parks district. Um, I know I love parks. I also like responsible development. I think that those are really good things. There's a benefit to having, um, property on the tax rules generating tax income for, um, our districts and for our county and for economic viability. So I'm not sure what, what that is all about. What is the status of that? What are the thoughts of development? What would happen to those properties? Information about that, I think, would be very, very useful to understand. And, let's see, I had another question. And this may be somewhere in our packet, so I could, we'll hopefully find it, but it's a big packet. I am interested in, um, the revenue differential of what would be a part of the tax district if 97028 was out, and would it be a viable parks district if without 97028? So those are my questions for now, but as I, now that I've had this testimony, it's been great, really helpful to have the presentation. It puts, you know, a lot of flavor into the written materials, and I'm gonna go back and review, and I may have more questions for next week.
I had some of those same questions, and thank you for bringing those forth. We have two other commissioners in the queue. Commissioner Savis.
Yeah, um, I'll, if you could just indulge me, um, earlier in the, in the meeting here, I mentioned I have a unique perspective, and that's being that I, back in 1990, was it, we voted for and became the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. So I certainly have a, um, perspective about service levels, and I've learned a lot as the liaison, and learned a lot about how, what walkability, distance between facilities, um, equity and so forth. And there were a number of things that were included in the ballot measure and the, and the subsequent, um, orders by the Board of County Commissioners at the time, that certain improvements would be made within that district. And, um, I can attest to, um, the reality today, 30 years later, that a lot of those improvements and promises have not been fulfilled. Um, and 80% of the population of the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District resides in an unincorporated area, and the remainder has resided, you know, Happy Valley when they were in the district, and the other city being Milwaukee. Today's Milwaukee, about 22,000 people. So there have been some inequities, and, um, but I'm not here to talk about the inequities so much as more about the tax rate. So there's a huge assessed value in the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District. The tax rate is 54 cents per thousand, and the leadership and a lot of other people, rightfully, I don't disagree, have said you can't sur, a district can't survive on 54 cents per thousand. Commissioner, um, you know, we have the lowest tax rate for a park district in the state of Oregon. I think the next one is Chehalum, um, but they're all a dollar or more, um, per thousand. So I too, I mean, I, I respect the fact, um, and I really do, that the citizens have taken the initiative here to drive this petition, to create a park, so I, I, I appreciate that. And I, you know, seeing that will and that desire and that vision, wanna make sure that it's viable, that you actually create something that is viable. You just can't change the tax rate. Let me, so let me give you an example. If you wanna change the tax rate two years from now and you realize the tax rate's too low, you have to dissolve the district and reform the district. Now, that's a huge, that's a huge risk, cause you make a huge public investment. If the, if the citizens don't feel satisfact, that they're satisfied, that district could actually be dissolved, and then it becomes back in the lap of the Clackamas County Commissioners. The property, all those assets will come back on us, I believe. It's my understanding. So, um, I, I wanna make sure that if it does go on the ballot and if it does pass, that you have, it's a viable district. And I understand, I read the feasibility, I read the packet, um, I see how much money it generates, I see some grant monies coming in to build it, but I also really, really wonder, and that's why I was hoping if there was a subject matter expert in here, and maybe I will research that between now and then, um, but I think it'd be a benefit for everyone to hear that as well, so maybe we can have someone present from the staff, basically on what they think. But I'll just tell you that the distance between, um, Welch's and government camp or Wapanisha, um, even from a maintenance standpoint, or from services or programming or access of programming, that's, that's expensive, and knowing how much money this generates per year, which is about 500 some odd thousand dollars, we don't have the exact assessed value to base that on, but about a billion dollars, you know, the math comes out to about a 500,000 approximate, and I saw that in a feasibility study, the number there. Um, I'm just concerned that it's, it is, if it is viable today, that with, you know, the increasing cost versus the fixed rate of the tax increases, that it's actually viable in the future going ahead. So I would just wanna study that or make sure it's studied a little bit deeper. And in, if there is, and I don't know, and I, I'm, right now I have an open mind, I don't have, I'm not leaning one way or another, but I have talked to some of you, um, and, you know, if there is consideration this board to withdraw 97028 from this formation, um, the resulting income or tax base will be reduced. So what does it become viable at that point? If we just simply reduce it or take 97028, I'm not sure it becomes viable financially. So that means the tax rate would have to be higher on a lower tax base in order to generate similar amount of dollars. So that was one thing. The other thing I have is just suggested in full disclosure is what would it take to get folks in 97028, you know, in that area to be supportive? Would it be that the proposal be changed to make, um, the district, the seven members of the district, um, by zone, so to make sure that there's help, some representation that assures that people that live in a certain area gets a voice on the board? That's one option. And/or is there some amenity, identified amenity or guarantee? And I don't know what that looks like, because, again, coming from the NCPRD experience, those guarantees have not been fulfilled, always. Um, that, is there some kind of guarantee that an amenity would be built in the government camp or the 97028 area that would be accessible, feasible, and generate a benefit? So I think we have to weigh that, and I know we have very little time, a, a week, to, to generate that, but I have thrown these ideas out. Um, but, you know, what I see here today is we have a, a group of citizens that wanna form a district and, and provide services. I value that. I can see value for people who wanna use those facilities, um, but we have to make sure it works. And the other thing that probably has not been said at all is that we're not in a, we're not in a district, but everyone who resides in Clackamas County is, is... not in a district, but everyone who resides in Clackamas County is, receives the benefit of county parks. Granted, we can't do a lot, we have a little bit of resources, but there still is the county parks, which serves that area to some degree. So I want to mention that, and I think I will conclude my comments there. Chair?
Well, I think your comments are very good. I've thought of the same thing, and so if we can get some numbers that both commissioners have requested by next week, you know what? If we don't get them next week, we'll have a third hearing. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Yeah, I was, I would say, given the opposition, it's going to be necessary to see if it's viable without the inclusion of folks. So I would like to see that as well. I want to go back to what Commissioner Fisher said, though, about responsible development. My understanding is that we've worked with this, with you folks for a very long time with the women's club and the women's group. We've given extensions because it's what you've wanted, is to have a community center there, you know, still have the, that sense of adornment center, I mean, that, an opportunity for people in the area. If this doesn't happen, then my understanding is that the property will revert back to the county. Is that correct, Mr. Madcor? And then we would probably be in a position where we would have to sell for development of some kind.
It still is county property, but you are correct. There is an IGA that extended this expectation. I think it's until May of 2022, and this IGA does say that that's the last extension and that if the district's not formed, the county would sell the surplus property.
Yeah. So that's kind of the deadline. That's like the final deadline that we're facing, and this idea of really maintaining that area as a, as a park has been on the books for a very, very long time.
It has been.
Yeah.
Have you finished, Mr. Schrader? Gary Schmidt?
Slight clarification. The Udest Commissioners, you approved extending that IGA through December 31st, 2022, so it's through this calendar year.
December 31st of 2022, not May. Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah. Stephen, question for you. Do we have the authority to change the tax rate, or would that have to result in a new petition being circulated?
I'm reluctant to ever say this board doesn't have authority to do something, but in terms of changing the tax rate, it would append their feasibility study. So they would have to go back and do a whole new feasibility study on what that tax rate's going to do, what it's going to generate and how it incorporates into the, their plan.
Okay. And then my last question for you is if we decide to not move forward and with that property that's county-owned, do we have the ability to direct any type of development within our zoning and land use prerogatives? Can we dictate kind of what we would like to see there with, in collaboration with the community?
Yes. I mean, you could do a disposition to development agreement, which is what you do often with development agency land, like we want a hotel here, we want medical facilities, we want this type of use, yes. You could do something along those lines. You could always extend the IGA as well if it was within, it's within the board's discretion.
Okay. So we have a lot of options in moving forward and involving community input with how we will move forward. Thank you.
Yeah. Also, you know, they've wanted to put this on the May ballot, they could go back and do more work and put it on the November ballot as well. So I look at these, that particular deadline could be changed as well.
So one of the options would be as well, but then this would be, we do have county parks, and it would be whether or not we would have the will and the, quite frankly, county dollars to maintain it as a county park. That's always a possibility. However, you know, that's, that's taking on a whole nother piece of our park system that we would have to maintain and we, as a county, and we would have to take care of it. We did do that with the Madrone Wall Park, where we basically took that property and now maintain it as a property park. We got help with the, from the National Guard to help with those improvements and pull things together. But I'm saying this, but I have to be very clear that we are operating under a very constrained budget, and I don't want to have my administrator kind of have a heart attack as I mention this. Okay.
Well, Martha, it's interesting. You know, this is a formation of a district is the question before us.
I know that. I'm just saying if there, if it just doesn't happen.
By the way, have you seen the budget? They have a proposed budget in this packet, and so if you want to know what things are going to cost, they have presented a budget of what they want to do in that, and if you think it's feasible or not, you can take a look at the budget and make your own determination. Commissioner Savas?
Yeah, I just, you know, I want to just say this, and I, we need to recognize how much work all these people went through to bring this here today, all the signature gathering, all the work. So, you know, we want to try and make something out of this somehow, and so we want you to get, we want you to be successful, and we want the community to benefit. So I recognize the hard work that you've all done. So, you know, thank you on behalf of the community.
I think we all recognize the hard work. This has been a long time in the making, but the questions that I propose and the other commissioners propose need to be answered before we can move forward because it's a big responsibility on our shoulders as well. So, sir?
Yeah, I just have one, I've got all of these questions. Is it possible for me to have the other reports that you have?
Yes.
To make sure I, there may be other things in that at all.
Yes. Staff will get that to you, Gary. Yeah, it's not a problem.
Isn't it online?
It's online, yes.
It's online.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, you know, the information that I got from the tax assessor, you can have that, too. Anything that we talk about is a public record, so we're not, yeah, not, so I don't see any more comments. Stephen, do we need a motion for continuance?
Yes, Chair. You want a motion to continue this till next week, the board's business meeting, January 13th at 6:00 PM.
Chair, I move, we continue the public hearing on the petition for the formation of the Hoodland Park District to Thursday, January 13th.
Second.
Commissioner Savas has moved for continuance of this issue. Commissioner Schrader has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing Shannon call the poll.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
She stepped outside.
So sorry. Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes three zero. At this point, Commissioners, we're going to take a break. I suggest we come back at 10 minutes after the hour to finish the rest of the county business. Thank you very much. Returning, Gary, we are now returning to the public hearing on January 6th, or, excuse me, the business meeting for January 6th, 2022, and what's up next on the agenda?
Thank you, Chair. Next, we are on to the consent agenda. Shannon, would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes, just one moment. I've got to bring up the page. My apologies for the delay. That's all right. Go ahead. Elected officials, approval of previous business meeting minutes. The Sheriff's Office, approval of a board order for the purpose, purchase of body cameras, tasers, associated accessories and software services and training from Axon Enterprise, Inc., through a cooperative contract. Total contract value is $2,064,717. Funded through the Sheriff's Office levy. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a grant agreement from the Oregon's Department of Justice for Child Abuse Multidisciplinary Intervention Program Services. Total grant award is $1,040,851.29 funded through the state of Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Technology services, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the city of Sandy to provide internet services to businesses along the CBX fiber network. Clackamas Broadband Exchange will fund the expansion of the existing CBX network to interested businesses, up to $3,000 per customer, utilizing existing CBX funding and reimbursed by the monthly internet service fee. No county general funds are involved. Finance, approval of Amendment Number One to Contract Number 2905 with Rapid Response Bio Cleaning LLC for campsite cleanup and impact reduction services. Amendment Number One adds $189,000 for a new total not to exceed value of $315,000 and extends the duration of the contract through December 14th, 2024. This is an on-call contract with services paid by departments utilizing these services, some of which may use county general funds. Health, housing and human services, approval of a subrecipient grant agreement with Todos Juntos for prevent-net community school drug and alcohol prevention services in rural Clackamas County. Grant agreement value is $190,000, funded through Oregon Department of Education. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the state of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority for access to the electronic referral system, Oregon Tobacco Quit Line. Contract maximum value is $40,000, funded through the Health Share of Oregon Grant. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Toowallatin Valley Fire and Rescue for Project Hope Program. Contract not to exceed $35,490. Funding through the University of Baltimore Combating Opioid Overdose Through Community Level Initiative Grant. No county general funds are involved. Approval of an intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Fire District One for the Project Hope Program. Contract not to exceed $31,090. Funding through the University of Baltimore Combating Opioid Overdose Through Community Level Initiative Grant. No county general funds are involved. Approval for intergovernmental agreement with Clackamas County Fire District Number One for medical direction services for their emergency medical program. Contract maximum is $72,000. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a non-federal subrecipient grant Amendment Number Four with Northwest Housing Alternatives for System Diversion, Homelessness Prevention and Rapid Rehousing Services. Amendment adds $60,000 for a revised maximum contract value of $600,000. Funded by the state of Oregon Housing and Community Services Department. No county general funds are involved. Approval of a revenue agreement with CARE Oregon for Integrated Care Model Expansions Funds, intended to provide financial support for the construction of the new integrated Sandy Health Center. Maximum agreement value is $500,000. Funding is through CARE Oregon. No county general funds are involved. Approval to apply for a funding opportunity with Oregon Health Authority COVID-19 School-Based Health and Recovery Funding, 21 fiscal year, 21 to 23. Award amount will be up to $150,000. Funding is through Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Approval of Amendment Number Zero Six to the intergovernmental agreement Number One Six Six Zero Three Six with the state of Oregon, acting by and through its Oregon Health Authority, for the operation and financing of community mental health, addiction treatment, recovery and prevention services and problem gambling programs. Amendment adds $98,582.78 to the agreement, increasing the maximum value to $9,238,209.62. Funding through the state of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority. No county general funds are involved. Approval of the, an intergovernmental agreement with the University of Baltimore to accept grant subaward for combating overdose through community level initiative, intervention initiative to expand the capacity of Project Hope. Total grant award is $233,457, funded through the University of Baltimore Grant. No county general funds are involved. Approval of subrecipient grant agreement Amendment Number Five with Ant Farm, Inc., to provide rent assistance to households impacted by the COVID-19 crises. Amendment Number Five adds $2,532,377 of federal emergency rental assistance funds and reduces community development block grant COVID funds by $409,946 due to the availability of the federal funds. Amendment Number Five also extends the agreement through June 30th, 2022. New contract total is $11,442,019, funded through federal, state and housing and urban development grants. No county general funds are involved. Transportation and Development, approval to accept an easement and equitable servitude for Clackamas County Leaking Underground Storage Tank Site Number Zero Three Dash Nine One Dash Zero Three Eight Five. Fiscal impact is unknown but expected to be minimal. Funded through the Clackamas County Road Fund. No county general funds are involved. Approval of contract with Kittleson and Associates for design services for the Bilquist Elementary School sidewalks. Total contract value is $527,000, $527,632, pardon me, funded through Oregon Department of Transportation State Grant and partially matched by system development eligible funds. No county general funds are involved. That is the end of my list, Chair.
Thank you. Very good presentation. Commissioner Fisher, you have your light on.
Yeah, thank you. Wow, Shannon, that was just great. You do a great job reading that. It's a lot to do. I just wanted to circle back because on Tuesday, we had a discussion with the board about the finance consent agenda item dealing with clamp cleanup, and Elizabeth Comfort, our finance director, has confirmed with me that this is not dealing with clearing any homeless camps. This is dealing with any type of debris after the fact as part of this contract to clean up. So I know that was a question that we discussed. I just wanted to clarify that for the board, and that's all.
Thank you very much for that. Does any commissioner wish to remove any item from the consent agenda? Hearing none. Any further discussion? Shannon, please call the poll.
Oh, I think we have to move.
Yeah, I need a motion. You know, sorry. Yeah. Yeah, it's like, okay, yeah.
So I move we approve the consent.
Second.
Commissioner Schrader's move for approval of the consent agenda, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded that. Thank you very much. Now, do we have any, any additional discussion? Please call the poll.
Commissioner Savas?
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher?
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader?
Aye.
Chair Smith?
Aye. Motion passes four zero. Now, we do have regular public testimony, public comment, and we have a gentleman here in the audience. Les, please come up, state your name and residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Les Poole. I live in Gladstone. Welcome to 2022. Hopefully, it goes better than 21 for everybody, no matter who you are or where you are or what you think. We've got election coming, and you folks have got a budget to deal with, so I think you're going to be hearing more and more from the public in general. People are feeling strapped. Inflation is high, borrowing is up. While there's some good indicators out there economically, I think that there's an underlying message of uncertainty about the future and especially about our economy. I sat back and reflected on the earlier issue, and I'm not commenting on it because that's off the table now, but as someone that's been the face of countywide petitions for light rail votes and for urban renewal votes and, you know, been involved in efforts such as that, it's really challenging, and I do appreciate the comments and the way that that was handled in terms of keeping the door open. These folks are working real hard, but you've got a job to do, and as I said already, people are really feeling strapped, and I think that message is out there everywhere. Speaking of petitions, as someone that really thinks the public ought to weigh in on major investments and major changes, I encourage folks to stay on top of the petition to require a vote on the tolling, and there'll be a lot more coming out about that, a lot more focus on that, and I do know that there's a upcoming forum, I believe, a second forum on tolling planned by the county, and I appreciate that. I'll conclude and spend my last minute on our good friends, Metro. Speaking of overspending and out of control, I can think of no government entity that is doing more of that than Metro, and I can think of no government entity that is so unaccountable for their actions, and we're all paying for it. I'm troubled that while other jurisdictions are conducting live meetings, the public is still locked out of Metro's building. Most of what we hear from Lynn Peterson is chippy little political attacks and gesturing. I've invited her to come down here on a quarterly basis, and it would be great to have her come down here and not get drilled, but have some real live interaction on camera with you folks. Unfortunately, they've changed their hours probably to further diminish public participation, and now Metro meets at 10:30 on Thursday morning, so they have their meetings now. Folks need to understand that Metro is a runaway train, and they're having a tremendous effect on our on our future.
Thank you.
So thank you for your time, and good luck to everyone on everything.
Thank you, Les. Shannon, do we have anybody online?
Yes, we do, Chair.
And how many?
We have one registered, and then we, it looks like we only have three people who aren't registered that might want to raise their hands.
Well, they need to let us know if they want to speak or not, and they can do that while we listen to the registered one.
Yes.
If you would go ahead and allow that person to come in.
Excellent. Thank you so much. If anyone who has not had the chance to register would like to raise their hand, please do so now. Bill Weir, you are up. Please state your name and residence. You have three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. I had two things I'd like to talk about. The first one is, on Tuesday's work session, Commissioner Savis brought up about the Zoom meetings and the texts and the chats that are going on, and he also mentioned that he had a number of constituents that were concerned about it. And I don't know who he spoke to, but I know myself, I've run across a number of people that expressed that same concern. And I think that when the commissioners, and it seems to be really during public testimony that I notice it, when we're on Zoom, we don't get to see the commissioners because the screen is blacked out. But if we watch it again, we see that when we're giving testimony, that one or more of the commissioners are busy on their phones texting. And it's, the reason given is that they're talking to staff, but we don't know who staff is, and why they need to be talking to staff when people are giving testimony. The word "staff" is too vague. What staff? Is it the staff of the county, or is it of the governor's office? Or are they political consultants? We don't know. So I would really encourage to follow up with Commissioner Savis and get that into the public minutes each week. Now, the other thing is, I've been in email contact with the county administrator concerning Lettich and its posting of the Zoom meetings. And this has been a conversation by email since October, and I think it's important that these major committees have Zoom access to the meetings that had just passed. And I know several months ago, Mr. Schmidt had mentioned that it was all taken care of when I brought it up publicly, and it wasn't. And so I've had these emails, and it's still not resolved after all this time. And so I would think that the commission itself, since the committees serve at the pleasure of the commission, that that, a decision can be made to allow for Zoom record of meetings of Lettich and some of the other committees that have influence in policy decision.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weir. Gary, would you like to, what's he talking about?
Yes, I've been in contact with Mr. Weir, and we have emailed communication. I forwarded this email communication, commissioners, back in, I think it was November, early December. He's requesting specifically that the Leaders in Equity Diversity and Inclusion Council, which is an advisory board to you, it's an external committee, that their Zoom meetings be recorded and published online. And I thought they were, but they are not. Some ABCs, advisory boards that meet on Zoom, they do have their recordings on our county website, others do not. I've asked public and government affairs staff to make a recommendation to me on what, what our standard should be for all advisory boards, so we can have a consistent application. And then the holidays hit, so I do expect a response back any moment now, which I will inform you commissioners, and then have a conversation. My recommendation is we just be consistent, not to pick one advisory board or the other. They either all have Zoom recordings online, or if they don't, they certainly must have minutes or some sort of published document of what that committee did. So that is what I will report back to you, commissioners, in this month of what staff recommends will be the right process, but my advice is it needs to be consistent across all advisory boards.
Okay, we'll work on it. Is it, too, a technology capacity issue? Are we dealing with that?
It certainly would be, yes.
You know, I think it's really easy for people to come and say, oh, you know, your government, and you need to have all this technology, because maybe one person might have it at home. But when you magnify that to the size of our county government, you just don't turn on a dime, like what's expected. Now, I'd like to, you know, take a shot at a couple of the comments that Bill Weir has said. Define staff. Well, staff, I think he knows that. County staff, you know, we're not talk, I'm not talking to the governor. I'm not talking to anybody outside the building. And Bill Weir, I have said before, and you know this, that if I am on my phone, and a person is coming up, and they're asking a question about policy, I'm trying to find the answer for them while they are in the room, because I think that is my duty. And the telephone technology text message that isn't available to all of us affords that answer in a very timely manner, where in the past, we weren't able to get answers as readily as we are now. I will continue to do that. My question to you is, do you want the questions answered that are asked in a timely manner? That's what I'm trying to do. Commissioner Savis?
Yeah, little bit different topic, but one that we just discussed here. I didn't pay it, I wasn't paying attention on the ABC element, or thought of the ABC element, Mr. Madcor, when you were talking about the new law, or Gary, I forgot what was, you were both. So does that new law, the state, apply to the ABCs, or is it only apply to the jurisdiction itself?
I mentioned that during yesterday, or Tuesday's session. The statute says governing body, which by definition would be you, the Board of County Commissioners as a governing body of the county and its special districts. There is some commentary in the AG's manual on public meetings that some advisory groups, if they have final decision-making, might be construed as governing bodies. So my recommendation was, let's start with this group and see if we can implement it in a trickle-down manner over time if necessary.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that. I want to make, I want to make another comment related to this, and it's really about the spirit of ORS 192, public meetings and public records. The spirit is, is that essentially, and I'm paraphrasing, this essentially is that the public has a right to hear and be aware of all information and deliberations by their elected board. That is the intent and the spirit. So if there's a conversation hypothetically, that the, that's going on that influences a decision, you know, and that's hard to define, then they, they should have a right access to that. So, you know, I do know that advisory boards do make recommendations, or advisory recommendations to the governing body, and then some of them are higher profile and make significant decisions. So it seems to me we need to discern which, if any, or if all ABCs are included in that, you know, in the effort of being truly transparent. But I just, I just want to say that if you, if you look at my original copy way back when I first got elected, it was a purple binder, the Oregon Public Records Law. The pages are worn out, I read it so many times, and I've gotten all the new copies since then. The point of the matter is, is that the spirit of the transparency law has been consistent all the way through, it's just been more refined, and there have been examples of which they had strengthened the language in the ORS 192 to make sure that things that were not clear are more clear today than they were before. So if anything, it's gotten stronger on the intent, and I'll just conclude my comments there.
Okay, thank you very much. That is the end of our communication. Do we have anybody else?
That is the end of my list. Thank you, Chair.
Okay, good. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting. Gary, do you have any updates?
Thank you, Chair. I do, but in the interest of time, I'll hold them. Other than to share that during your board recess, December 20 through 31st, 2021, the county code appendix C authorizes me as county administrator to sign any contract at any amount on your behalf when you are on recess. I am pleased to share I signed no such contracts, none, because staff did an excellent job preparing for the recess and brought it all to you before you left or waited until you got back. So I'm formally announcing I signed no contracts on behalf of the commissioners during your board recess.
Excellent.
That is my report. Thank you.
I appreciate that very much. I appreciate staff doing their due diligence. Thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to commissioner communication. Up first is Commissioner Schrader.
Thank you, colleagues. Happy New Year. I'm starting the new year with my grandchild, Mae Claire.
Maeve.
Maeve, yes. Sullivan, very Irish.
Is your, is your light on?
Oh, no.
There we go. Thank you.
Maeve Claire Sullivan was born on December 22nd, eight pounds, 12 ounces. I had the opportunity to be there, just talked to my daughter yesterday, and she's over nine pounds. So she is thriving. She's a little poor Kina. And it made my, it made my New Years. I'm happy to also tell you that my two-year-old grandson, who loves the movie Cars, the Disney Plus Cars, who has now learned how to talk into his, into the TV thing, and we caught him saying, Disney Plus Cars with the, with the microphone. So we had to kind of nix that in the bud, because he's kind of obsessed with those movies. So that was the fun part of my New Year. But there are other few things I'd like to let you know about, and that is, Leanne Thompson and I, and I wanted to particularly let Commissioner Fisher to know this, basically, we're going to speak at the Health and Human Services Steering Committee today. Two weeks ago, during the last special session, the state legislature allocated $14 million to the state's 14 largest cities via SB 5561, and it gave them broad opportunities to create programs or services that address housing insecurity, lack of affordable housing, and homelessness in these communities. And today, we will ask for support from the steering committee to see if we can get a similar allocation for the Association of Oregon Counties and LOC. We've really been working on this issue for a while. When I was president of AOC Housing was my initiative. We had come up with a bill that would have given all the counties across the straight, the state, regional help in accessing OCHS dollars, in other words, state dollars. Part of the problem that we, we perceived is that we, as a county, have the infrastructure to pursue those kinds of dollars. Some of our smaller counties just do not have that kind of administrative capacity, so we wanted to give them some help. It, it didn't pass, but we are not letting it go, and we're trying to move this forward under, with, with AOC staff, Andy, who is the staff for County Solutions now. So I just wanted to give you, Sonja, a heads up. We'll mention that today. And colleagues, I wanted to let you know that that is something. And I'm, I'm working with Leanne now on the county solutions, as well as regional solutions for that. The other thing I want to mention today is, you know, it's January 6th, and a year ago, we had what folks are calling an insurrection at the state, well, at the federal Capitol. And I'd like to say a word in honor of the security officers who defended the Capitol at that time. It was a very frightening situation. It was not a peaceful protest. People were angry, the Capitol was breached, and what it really has taught all of us is how fragile our democracy is, and that we all have a right to express our opinions. But we cannot tolerate a breakdown in civility and civil society and revert to crashing through windows, you know, pushing people, disrespectfully treating physically the embodiment, the embodiment of our democracy in the Capitol. And I think one of the hallmarks of our country has been the peaceful transition of power to one president to another. And I think it was very shocking and very disheartening, and I frankly think this is going to go down in history as a moment that we have to realize as a nation that we have a right to object, we have a right to disagree, but the wheels of our democracy have to be maintained, and the transition of power must be protected at all costs. And I will also say that I believe in the integrity of our voting systems, and here's why. It's because when you look at how things are counted across this great nation and in our county, a number of the folks who are doing those jobs are people who are volunteers and are very strictly adhering to the rules of how they assess the votes, how they're counted. They are observed closely, and much like the jury system, for me, it's one of the last things that citizens, as volunteers, take on as a responsibility. So this wasn't a bureaucracy. These are our own citizens and our own people, and I have friends who volunteer when we do our elections, and they tell me what it's like, and it is like that, I believe, across the United States. So when we question the integrity of our elections, think about it, that we're, we're really questioning the integrity of our friends and neighbors who, if they get paid at all as minimal, but do this as volunteers because they see it as a duty, a civic duty that is critical to who we have as a nation. So, you know, I'm not going to belabor this, but I would like to see 2022 start to be the year that we heal our differences as a county and as a nation. I have friends across the political spectrum. I try not to judge anybody. It doesn't mean I agree with everything they have to say, but if we can't proceed with one another with civility, decency, and the opportunity to disagree in a way that is not destructive, we will fail our county, we will fail our state, and we will fail our nation. And I don't think any of us here wants to see that kind of failure, and that we all want to protect the integrity of the democratic process. So I just wanted to mention that because I think it's very important that we recognize, and that people were harmed and frightened and scared. And it's one of the reasons, I will tell you, that getting angry is a waste of energy and time. You have to let things go, and you have to get along with one another, and you have to learn to move forward. So, Happy New Year, guys, and I'm so glad to be here with all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Schrader. Your comments are very well taken. Up next is Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you, Chair Smith, and thank you, Commissioner Schrader, for your words this morning. It's been forefront on my mind is that it's January 6th today. It's much like September 11th that we remember the day. We remember where we were, what we were doing, how we heard about what was going on, watching, turning on the TV, watching what was happening, being, for me, in shock. I remember I was texting Gary Schmidt, saying, oh, my gosh, are you watching this? I was texting other friends, what's, what's happening? I was texting our congressional delegation, see if they were, how they were doing. It was a very frightening time. So today, we are a year later, and one of the things that I've been focusing on is really the, there is a terrible divide. It hasn't gone away in our country. It was there on January 6th, it was there before January 6th. It continues today. But here at the local level, we have not only a great responsibility, we have a tremendous opportunity, and I really am honored and privileged to serve on a local body where we get to listen to people, take their concerns, turn it into action, and do good work. And when we are looking at the people, at the And when we are looking at the people at the other end of all of our decisions, just much like we did today for, was that an hour, hour and a half of time discussing, we do amazing work. And even though we have diversity of opinion, I really appreciate Commissioner Schrader talking about civility and decency and sharing of the difference of ideas, because within all of that discourse, that's democracy, that's America, that is the gift of our nation. So at least here at the local level, we may not always agree, but I do believe that we are united in the principles that we all care about in serving our community. And so just a little statement that I've been thinking a lot about, united we stand, divided we fall. And for here in Clackamas County, we can be an example for the rest of the nation, that we do look at what is best for the people and our community in the decisions that we make. So it was a horrible day a year ago, but now we are hoping we move forward and adhere to the values that we all care about in Clackamas County.
Very well said, Commissioner Fisher. I appreciate that comment, those comments as well. Commissioner Savis, you're up.
Yeah, well, appreciate all the commentary. I've spent the last few weeks actually reflecting more than ever on what took place a year ago because of my own personal back crisis that I was basically struck with on December 13th in 2020, and flat on my back in intense pain all the way through Christmas and New Year's, and got my first relief on January 7th.
Wow.
With the shot in my back, which really has helped, and I'm recovering and doing a lot better. But I just, when my family was over during Christmas and New Year's and talking with folks, I was, I didn't remember anything that took place on Christmas Day or New Year's or any of that period of time because of the pain meds I had to take and so forth. And so I was watching the news, it was a year ago, I forgot what day it was, a year ago today that the bombing in Nashville happened, I think the latter, right after Christmas in 2020. Didn't even know, didn't even recall it, because, and I'm the person who stays abreast of the news and reads and everything else, but during that period of time. So on January 6th, it was pretty surreal for me, because, one, I'm like, is this actually happening? You know, was the insurrection really happening? And trying to take into account what was all that. So I appreciate those comments, but it was a fog for me. It was quite the fog. But I think it was pretty well the aftermath, I think, that has been most significant, you know, what's taken place since then in the dialogue and the conversation across this country and recently as to our country. I think, you know, really fundamentally, appreciate Commissioner Schrader bringing up elections and the people who work there. I think frankly, most of the workers and the work that's done, mostly, I think, is solid, competent, trustworthy. I know here in Clackamas County, I have a tremendous amount of faith after learning all about how elections work and how the votes are counted. I think what's probably aggravating a lot of people perhaps are some of the policies about ballots, you know, who gets a ballot, who doesn't get a ballot, and so on. And I'm not here to, I'm not going to delve any deeper than that, it's a complex conversation. But I think that's probably not the responsibility of the people who do the counting, or the counties who, across this country, who are responsible, the county clerks in particular are responsible for, you know, putting together a trustworthy, solid election counting to, on all local and state and federal elections. So hats off to all of them for the good work that they do and the intent. And Martha's right, there are a lot of volunteers that volunteer their time, and they have firsthand, and here in Clackamas County, that's making sure that each party is represented, so there's balance in there, so it's not volunteers from one party and not from another, it's a split. And so, a lot of faith there. But what I want to talk about a little bit is expand on our conversation on Tuesday, and also conversations we had recently prior to Christmas break, and that was about getting some, whatever it takes, whether that is asking a state senator or a state representative to champion a bill or something, some kind of legislation, to put more investment into behavioral mental health facilities, drug and alcohol treatment centers. It is not lost on any of us, certainly not lost on me. So many people, the public, the people that we represent, so many people are truly, I think, aware that there is a need for that, truly aware, why aren't you doing something? And I don't think that they're necessarily, you know, associating that to Clackamas County, but I think really it's government. I think they expect government to step up and to provide those services. And now that there's money coming, and this year, we'll start to see some money flowing in from the Supportive Housing Services measure. That has been, you know, obviously delayed, I don't know exactly how a year of revenue was lost, but we've lost one year of revenue. I think it was $906,000, Chair Smith, that we collected for Supportive Housing Services, the entire amount of 2021 was $906,000, and we were promised 24 in 2021. That hasn't happened. But anyhow, with that money coming in, and I'm confident that there'll be substantially more than $906,000 in 2022, I'm confident of that, that'll be mandated as a collection. But I'm hoping we can direct some of that towards mental health, drug and alcohol treatment, because it's needed. We know that a lot of people, not all people that are houseless, and not all people that are homeless, have drug and alcohol issues, but a lot of them do. And I think the people that are creating a lot of havoc are emergency responders, whether it's police, fire, or whatever, that are treating, when most of their work, or a lot of their work, is now dedicated to treating, or assisting, or responding to calls for service that are related to a mental health breakdown or a drug alcohol issue, that is, I think, indirectly thwarting the efforts of what public safety and all that is all about. They should be out there dealing with more crimes and dealing with the things that are on the street, but they are spending a lot of that time dealing with the crisis at hand. So our resources aren't going as far, and I think it's a responsibility for us all to step up. So hopefully, someone can sponsor a bill, or do something, or find some funding, or get our state legislature to commit funding for that, or locally here at a regional level with our Supportive Housing Services, to make that impression. And that concludes my comments for today.
Thank you, Commissioner Savis. I agree with you as well, and I agree with all my commissioners' comments. Today, they were very good, and in the interest of time, I'm not going to repeat them, but they were very heartfelt. I will say, starting this new year, I have, as Chair of your commission, a brand-new assignment that I'm very happy about. And as you know, we've had a long history in this county of supporting the Lamont Falls locks, and the Oregon State Legislature formed a commission, and Governor Brown has appointed me to serve on the commission. And I'm very, very excited about that and moving forward. When I was on the commission last time around, I was the liaison from this board representing us in the formation of trying to do something, trying to reopen the locks. Locally, we have $7.5 million that has been set aside for the repairs. Repairs are about double. The Corps of Engineers will agree to repair that as soon as we raise the rest of the money. It sounds like, based from summit strategies and the congressional delegation, that is a very real possibility. We're going to keep working on repairing them and getting them operational. And the next step is to making sure we have a plan in place on how those locks are used, and that's what this commission will do, turn it into a business model. And I'm really excited about being on the formation of that, and I want to thank all my commissioners for your support in me doing this, and the other folks originally who supported by nomination. Seeing no other business before the board today, I believe we are adjourned.